Just a red line version.
I told you, did I not know?
You're right.
So as soon as I look that up.
All alike.
Yeah, totally, a little bit.
No chance.
You have a lot.
Yep. Call to order the November twenty seventh, twenty twenty-three Palatine County Board of Supervisors meeting. We could get Mr. Williams to help us with the pledge allegiance, Mr. McPlon with the invocation, I'd be grateful.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Or thank you for this day, thank you for all the people who showed up tonight, let us have a good night tonight, and let's do the work of the people, amen.
Amen.
Any requests to postpone agenda items, additions, deletions, or changes in the order of the presentation?
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Williams?
The resolution Mr. Cox had requested that that come off the consent agenda.
Okay, so we have a, we'll basically use Mr. Cox's motion, his email is a motion, and that would be the second. We can take that eight E. And let's move it to ten B. Right after the resolution on new business, so we'll put that at ten B, that'll be the employee, Palatine County Employee Handbook. All in favor of that, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Ms. Carmack?
I would like to request a closed session to discuss a personnel matter.
Okay. So we have a motion to request a closed session on a personnel matter, you have a second?
Second.
Second, all in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Four votes on that, that passes. Be a closed session. Personnel issue. Move that to number thirteen. That will be after the final public comment session. County Attorney Comments will be fourteen, County Administrator will be fifteen, Board Comments sixteen, adjournment will be seventeen. We have a motion for approval of the agenda as amended.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Is approved. County Administrator updates?
I'll be brief this evening, we've got plenty on the agenda, and a number of them are public hearings, but just wanted to share that the county received for the third year in the road, for third year in a row, the distinguished budget presentation award from the Government Finance Officers Association. So this was presented to our finance department, but it's really an award on behalf of the whole county, the work of the Board of Supervisors, all of our staff, and our citizens too, throughout the budget process. But special congratulations, we go to our finance director, Ms. Charlotte Schubert, and then Carrie Delaney and Thomas Voe and our finance department, who aren't with us this evening. But again, something, you know, the budget work never stops, it's throughout the entire year, so good recognition, again, three years in a row for the hard work that we do in preparing the budget.
Congratulations and thank you, and it is hard work, a lot of work too. That'll bring us to our first public comment period, and if you've looked at the agenda tonight, we have a very heavy agenda. So I'm going to request that if you have a public comment to make during a public hearing, hold your public comments till that public hearing is called. If you wish to speak to the board during the public comment period or during a public hearing, I'm going to request that you come down to this first row or second row of seats to expedite the timing of how fast we can go through the public comment periods, and everybody gets an opportunity to speak. So we will open the floor for the public comment period now. If you're speaking as an individual, you have three minutes, if you're speaking on behalf of a group, you'll have up to five minutes, and the floor is open.
Bill Huff, twenty fifteen Westwood Court, District Two. Oh, looking back at the meeting back in July, reviewing the minutes, when the business was approved just east of Gospel Light Baptist Church, the owner of the business stated that he had four twenty-four-foot trailers that would not be at that site. And if they were, it would only be for loading or moving something, getting it to the job site, those twenty-four-foot trailers were designed to be at the job. In the last six weeks, those trailers have been, all four of them have been there, off and on. He got away with no turning lane, got away with no water, no sewer hookup. He got everything he wanted, and the county taxpayers got nothing, we got stuck with paying water and sewer. Who benefited from this? He did. But, you know, our safety should have came first, we've already had one tragedy at that intersection. Going over top of a hill, you're going right into a blind spot. And our safety was thrown out the window. In closing, I was asked by one individual to explain the difference between Starbucks and Wawa. I'm not going to try to do that tonight, but you want to ask that simple question, I'll explain to you the guidelines or the general ideas of marriage, maybe you need to learn that one first, thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone online?
No one on Zoom.
That'll close the public comment period, we'll move on to the consent agenda. Need a motion to approve the consent agenda?
So moved.
We have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye. Aye, any opposed? Consent agenda approved, old business Eastern Convenience Center.
Yeah, so when we last discussed this, I believe it was at the board workshop, the board requested getting appraisals on both the county-owned parcel as well as the parcel we were considering moving the project to as part of the PPA proposal. That has been completed, so there's copies of the appraisals in the board packet. So, you know, any discussion or input the board wishes to have tonight. Otherwise, we've got a new Public Works Director that's going to be starting December first, so they'll be coming soon. Eager to get their, their take on it, get their experience and their input on this project and how we move it forward, because once we do get this project going, wherever it is, you know, they'll be largely tasked with the development of it and staffing it and operating it. Again, staff happy to answer any questions tonight.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack?
Brett, can you give us an overview as to, I mean, we got the appraisals, so, and I understand that this is probably going to be getting shifted to the next board, but for some information for them to kind of start thinking, can you give kind of a synopsis, a brief synopsis tonight of where we are, what we're doing with this, and kind of what the holdups have been?
Yeah, so I guess a quick history of the project. The second Eastern Convenience Center has for a long time been in the county's long-term CIP plans. In twenty, somewhere in, I think, twenty eighteen timeframe, the county borrowed some funds to develop this as well as other projects. Then the county hired a consultant to look at some various properties within kind of the eastern area, particularly around the Stave Mill intersection that might be appropriate for it. They identified several properties, the county ended up purchasing a property adjacent to South Creek with thoughts of placing the project there. In working more with the solid waste CVWMA, and some of our staff felt that that site might be a little tight there for it with some of the environmental constraints, and wetland stream buffers, and not wanting to place it too close on the sixty. At that same time, the county received a proposal through the Public Private Partnership Act from a local firm who had interest in developing it jointly with the county on adjacent acreage, proposing a land swap where we would get that parcel which is behind Yardworks, they would get the county-owned parcel and develop that as well as Carter-Gallier Boulevard. So the PPA process has specific steps you have to go through, starting with a conceptual plan and design, which they did. Staff reviewed that, the board reviewed that, and said, we would like to move forward to the next detailed phase, which, you know, doesn't commit you to the project, but says we want to take a closer look at it, see more of the details. So they prepared that detailed phase and plan, which they submitted to the county, which now, for some time, we've been reviewing and talking about. One of the key parts for the board that you all have discussed is making sure if we were to proceed with the project through this way, that it's, you know, a fair deal for everybody involved, the applicants, the county, the citizens, everybody needs to get something fair out of it. So in that, we did the, the appraisals to see what are the relative values of each of the properties, both how they currently sit with their current zoning, and what the post-development value would be once it's presumably developed or rezoned commercially. So we got those appraisals, and as we anticipated, our property having Route sixty frontage and existing commercial zoning and direct access to South Creek is more valuable than the other property. The applicants have stated that they, they as well, if we do proceed with this, want to make sure it's a fair deal, so they would be open or agreeable to negotiation, which is part of the PPA process to make sure if we were to do something, it's equitable. So now really, the, the next step would be for the county, if the board wanted to proceed with this, to start to actually negotiate with them on the final terms and pricing on it, then we have to hold a public hearing before the board could actually execute an agreement. So that's, that's where we are within the, the process.
Mr. Chairman, can I follow up really?
Sure, absolutely.
Um, Mr. Latchney, if it goes so far that they proceed with this, the one thing that's been very nebulous in this whole process is the final cost. If a contract is written and there's a final cost of, say, ten million dollars, do they have to stick to that cost?
We would draft a contract that requires them to stick, I mean, the contract's going to have a price in it, there would be allowances for change orders. But I, I would never advise the county to sign an agreement that's open-ended on the dollar amount, so there would need to be a fixed dollar amount.
Because that is one thing that's been a little bit plaguing this whole time, is there has never been a fixed dollar amount to this, it's been estimates, estimates, but no fixed dollar amount.
If we went to a final contract stage, it would have to be fixed dollar amount, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Yes, ma'am. Any other comments? I have some. If you've listened to these meetings, I've certainly, I, I'm one that thinks we need an Eastern Convenience Center, I'm glad the previous board borrowed the money to do that, which was one point seven million dollars, one million seven hundred fifty thousand to be exact. This process started with this Eastern Convenience Center, our Public Works Director back at that time said that we should be able to do this project for one point seven million, one million seven hundred fifty thousand, and in doing so, as time elapses, we, we get to this place where, like everything, if you watch these board meetings, you know, what we thought cost, you know, one million now costs three million or four million. And so what's happened is, this started on April the twenty-second of twenty twenty-two, that's when we got the first proposal from Branchway Development for the PPA. At that time, the estimated cost to do the Eastern Convenience Center and build a road to extend Carter-Gallier over to Luckstone near the Walmart, the estimated cost in all the documents that they put forth was five point nine million dollars. That five point nine million dollars has escalated. To not give you the whole synopsis of how this has all gone, but it's gone from five point nine million to nine point five million. And that's a substantial amount of money. The, the parallel road projection has been on the, I guess, the, the eyes of, of boards previous to this board, and it, and it's a good idea, but is it the right idea at the right time for us to go down the road of nine and a half million dollars, when the need, as I see it right now, is an Eastern Convenience Center that would alleviate the pressures and the situations that we have at the Mitchell Road project? The proposal that was, was given to us showed two point four million dollars to do the convenience center. That's after we've acquired it, originally was one point seven million, or, you know, one million seven hundred fifty thousand to acquire property and build it. And the convenience center is approximately anywhere from three to five acres, and the only things that need to happen is the land needs to be cleared. You need water, you need sewer, and you need electricity. The containers at the convenience centers, we don't buy them, we don't own them, we, we have a contract with a, a vendor that they belong to. We would need to concrete or asphalt, and many say concrete, I, I, I don't know, I'm not the engineer, but, but I do know that if you want to clear three to four, five acres of land and put down concrete, run some water there, I mean, we have Dutoy wastewater treatment plant down there, and the waters on that side of Route sixty, I just have a hard time seeing that it's two point four million dollars in my estimates. And when you're talking about doing business with a contractor that says five point nine million, and then they go to seven point two million, and then they go to seven point nine million, and when they say seven point nine million, they throw out another one point six of alternate pricing. I, I'm not going to beat the dead horse together, because I do agree that this is going to end up before the next board, and how they move forward with it, there's a lot of information there that the taxpayers need to understand as to what's going on. I have a, a, a question for Mr. Latchney myself. Tom, is it a requirement that a determination be made under our PPA ordinance? That the Board of Supervisors have that determination made?
There, there are steps that have not been taken yet, one of them is a determination to move forward with preliminary or, or final agreement, yes.
There's definitely stages of, phases of this process.
We have not entered.
They're not even, we're not there.
Not correct.
You know, and so this goes back, in my opinion, not an opinion, it's a fact, from April twenty-second of twenty twenty-two. We've watched the price practically double, and we've not moved any dirt, we've not done anything. On August the fifteenth, we had a meeting, and we all talked about it, and we said, okay, let's get an appraisal to find out what these properties are worth down there, the, the one that we purchased, that we paid eight hundred fifty thousand dollars for. And we've got the appraisal, and I remember that meeting specifically, you know, it's going to take us, I think Tom had mentioned, it'd take a couple of weeks to get the appraisal. Tom had to contract with them and, and, and catch up with the people to, to set it up to get this appraisal done, but you know what? We're a couple of days away from December, that's a little more than two weeks. What's happening? What are we doing? What, what is the, the, the organization that we're trying to do business with, what are they doing? I mean, they told us that night that we were going to have to spend, Palatine County would have spent two hundred fifty thousand dollars to get an engineering estimate before we could get a final price. I don't think that's spending your money the right way, and, and if I had a vote on it, I'd be voting no, absolutely not. Do we need a convenience center? Yes. We own the property, let's contract with a construction company to clear the land, make it available, and let's go and have a Eastern Convenience Center. And my purpose of bringing this out tonight was just so the public could get another stab at the information that's out there, and understanding, you know, what's happening or not happening in this case. To move on to the next part of the agenda, which would take us to new business.
Miss, we have Resolution R twenty twenty-three dash forty-two, it's a request for a private road, or two private roads to serve four lots, and our planning director, Mr. Mike Sorrello, will present on this case.
Good evening. So request for two private roads as part of a four parcel subdivision located in the southeastern part of Palatine County, currently zoned A-ten. It's located. I do, great, thanks. This is located off Petersburg Road. I believe the applicant is here and can speak to their request. Sells, you will see on the plat that's shown above, the private road locations are shown as two easements on these parcels. The total acreage of this site is about sixty-eight acres total, they would create four lots, the two rear lots would be accessed by the private roads.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, Ms. Carmack?
Can you point out where the easement? Is an easement a private road, and can you point out where they are?
Let's just do. Yeah, there we go. There's one. So it serves this parcel, and then this parcel, and then the second is here, serving this parcel and this parcel.
What are those lot numbers, Mike?
Let's see. Let's see, there's sixty-nine L, nine M, nine N, and nine P.
Yeah, I'm asking, what I want to know is the, the, the lot numbers, the parcel numbers, I can't see them, they're too small for me to read.
Oh, I see, well, the tax map number, that was that, what I just gave you. Did you want the tax map number?
Well, it, it looks like Lot Eight and Lot Seven, is that correct? And then one of them, I'm going to guess, is to the east?
Yeah, there is, that question came up earlier, actually. Lots one through five are, were part of it early on the northern side of, on, on the northern side of that, of the plat that you see on the screen, you see them, Lot One through five. And then it picks up six, seven, eight, sorry, seven, eight, nine, and ten are the last three lots, or last four lots, rather, that are being created. So it's ten lots total out of the original subdivision.
So what looks like to be the thirty-foot access and utility easement, is that going to be one of the private roads?
Yes. I don't have it.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question?
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
Two things, the first is a comment, I think it's imperative going forward, you need to have bigger maps that are clearer and that you can actually see, I mean, I, I looked at this for twenty minutes, not twenty minutes today, and I could, had no idea that, that little stub thing that is called thirty-foot access and utility easement was the private road. Is it a private road, or is it an easement? And if, if that's the private road, label it as proposed private road, you know, so we have a clue as to what, you know, today when I was looking at this, I don't even know what I'm approving. So if it's, um, why, I'm, I'm curious, Mr. Latch, why are they calling this an easement and not a private road, I know that might sound?
There are actually two different issues. A, a private road is what we define as the way it's accessed, but there's something underneath of that private road, what can be under that private road is a fee simple ownership or an easement. We don't, we don't distinguish the dirt under the private road, so to speak, the ownership interest, so you could have a private road that runs across an easement. Or you could have a private road that runs across a fee simple absolute ownership, in both cases, it's, it's still a private road. So, so for example, I own a private road, I, I own it, but several of my neighbors have easements across it, so they're, they're accessing by easement on property I own. But all of it's a private road.
So tonight, are we approving an easement or a private road?
We're, we don't, we don't approve easements, we approve private roads, that's just identifying the methodology to be used by the private road for accessing.
Okay, then I, then just, my point being is going forward, it should be labeled as such, not an easement if we're not approving an easement.
You know, we don't approve easements, that's not.
That's a good point.
I think you understand this a little better, if you look at page two sixty-seven of your agenda, is the current configuration, which is multiple lots with each their road, their own road access. The proposal, which is on page two sixty-eight, was an effort to consolidate down the number of entrances out onto the road. And so they're ready, they could do page two sixty-seven by right and may have already done so, if I'm not mistaken.
They have.
So two sixty, page, what's on two sixty-seven, which is all those long narrow strips which all have their own driveway access?
Right.
That's what exists now.
Okay.
This is actually the applicant's attempt to make it a little more traffic friendly and reduce the number of access points. So reconfiguring what they, what exists now, and to create less access points, and to have shared private roads to, a couple of shared private roads to reduce the number of access points, so that's, this is not really somebody coming for something new. It, it is new in the sense of the private roads, but it's actually an, an effort, and, and staff actually supported this because it reduces the number of driveways coming out onto the road instead of increasing them. And so it, it's really an effort to reconfigure those long narrow lots to a series of a little bit wider, not as long lots, and less access points, does that make sense?
A hundred percent, but he loses two lots, so why is he doing this out of the goodness of his heart, if he legally can do page two sixty-seven?
No, I, I don't think he's, I think lots, five and six are still staying, this is just, this is only fixing part of it.
Okay.
Yeah, this is only addressing.
Okay, I see, so Lot Five and Six will stay, and he's taking the others.
If you look at the top, where there's that little dotted line at the very top, that's referencing the, the additional lots. So it's, it's just an effort to create a reduction in driveways.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr.
Since this is a, this is right next to my house and I pass it every day. I know. I mean, I know exactly what Mike and planning commission did and the developer, um, but entering going from four driveways down to two by my house is is I I like it, so. It's a lot better than four.
They're still open for.
Yeah.
Technically.
You have two private.
Yeah, you're going to stamp two, you know, so there's still going to be four entrances out under the road.
Mr. Chairman. Yes, sir. Where's lots one through four?
Uh, lots one, four through four are not shown on here, but they, if you in your packet where you see lots six, seven, eight, nine, ten on this person, they are located above this. And on the on the screen above the dash line.
Well, while we're talking about we want to consolidate entrances, why didn't staff urge the applicant to do a private road subdivision with one entrance?
That's that's actually another agenda item. That's, I mean, we've got an agenda item on this issue, right?
I know it's another agenda item, but.
Right now, this is by right.
Attention was always that we wanted to consolidate entrances, you know, to to public roads.
But but as of right now, under our current ordinance, this is a by right. As long as you got your road frontage, you can, as long as you got the two hundred feet of road frontage, you can do this all day long. Currently.
Let me pivot to why do we have two two-lot private roads instead of one four-lot private road subdivision?
Well, again, the developer, whoever did this, did this by right. We couldn't force them to have any. So in essence, they're they're offering voluntarily to reduce a couple of driveways, which is better than no reduction. We don't have any tools right now to make this happen. So it was simply the developer proposing this as as a way to reduce a couple of driveways. We we can't make them do this. We can't make them have a single entrance. We can't make them do anything right now.
We got a problem. Because if if you can do ten entrances like we've shown here or something less with the two two-lot subdivisions, we haven't fully addressed what we want to accomplish. And that was the consolidation of entrances to public roads. So if you can continue to do this, if you can come in and say, well, I can do by right ten acre cuts up and down the road, then we haven't accomplished what we want to accomplish with our ordinances.
Well, and under the public hearings, this is agenda item N. I mean, literally, we're going to talk about this issue in the public hearing on agenda item N.
But these are discretionary, aren't they? Private road subdivisions, aren't they?
Are discretionary at the board's discretion, yes.
Are they discretionary at the board's discretion or staff's discretion?
We encourage them, but they're not required at this point. We encourage the combination. In this case, we encourage this configuration to be able to reduce the number of driveways that are coming out on the road, but.
The ordinance right now says if you have ten acres and you have two hundred and fifty feet of road frontage, you can have access.
That's right. That's right. Now, there are. There is the ability. There's in the ordinance for there to be conditions of approval. You know, authorizing a private road, board of supervisors may impose such conditions regarding the location, character, and other features of the proposed subdivision granted the road as it may deem necessary in the public interest to ensure compliance with the requirements of this chapter of this chapter. That would come from you, not not from staff.
Okay, any other questions on this? Comments? It's your district, Mr. McClung.
Make a resolution. I meant make a motion that we approve resolution R dash two oh two three dash four two.
Do you have a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Need a roll call.
Oh, roll call, I'm sorry.
Right, Mr. Williams. Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
And the next item would be the resolution R twenty twenty-three dash forty-one, adopting the Palatine County employee handbook. This was on consent and moved to new business. The current handbook we have was adopted in twenty seventeen. So now going on six years, it's well due for an update. So a number of the changes relate to just coming into compliance with state and federal changes in employment law. But there are some other changes as well, just to streamline or better match how we actually handle HR matters in the county. Our Director of Human Resources, Ms. Melissa Lowe, is here with us tonight as well to answer any questions the board may have.
Any questions, board members?
I've got a lot of questions, but I'm not going to go through them all tonight, particularly given the length of our agenda. So my only point for pulling it off the agenda, excuse me, was to request a workshop. You know, we've got thirty-three major changes that have been identified, you know, by staff. It would seem to make sense that workshop would facilitate the type of question, answer, and discussion on these items. And I realize this is going to be something for the new board, but we're being asked tonight to sign off on it. That said, I'm reluctant to do that without having had, you know, the workshop.
Thank you, Mr. Williams. I can tell you, when I looked at that and I seen that, the workshop is exactly what I thought was the right thing to do, too. There's a it's an employee handbook and it goes in our pack. It goes from page forty-three up to page one seventy-nine. Well, one seventy-eight, I guess, one seventy-seven, yeah, one seventy-seven. That's the the handbook for the whole county and for each employee here. And as far as I'm concerned, I think that there should definitely be a workshop. It should involve involve the board of supervisors, whether it's this board that starts it and carries it on to the next board. Um, as Mr. Williams said, he has multiple questions. I I don't know that I have, you know, multiple ones, but I do have a few of them. I'm in favor of a of a workshop and a later date for this. Ms. Carmack, Mr. McClung.
Fine with that.
I would like to see it moved to the new board.
Okay.
After the year.
Okay.
I think they would. The new board would, uh, you know, we have input. The new board will be here. They can make the overall decision. I mean, if Melissa agrees with that, we don't have to do it tonight, so.
A workshop that can get put out there. Whenever, and get it started in conversation, and maybe that workshop is in January, which is probably the right thing to do. Okay, we settled that.
All right, then that moves us into our public hearings for the evening. The first is for a new agricultural forest district. We have a number of these. I believe staff will kind of consolidate and and present at one time on these. And my understanding is also if the board wishes, confirm with the county attorney, but I think we can hold a single public hearing on these rather than individuals.
That's how we did it at the planning commission. They would have been one public hearing for all the AFDs, and then if somebody wanted to come speak, they just had identified which AFD they were speaking on. And then one one motion, if if everybody's agreeable in all of them.
I second that.
I I'm fine with that. I mean, there's six of them, and if staff would come up and present and we can have questions and we'll open the public comment period up for the or public hearing up for the public. And if the public has a a question or a conversation on any of the six AFDs, we'll have a a hearing that you can come in and speak.
Good evening. So if you look on that map right there, that is our current as well as our proposed AFDs that you can see on there. So the proposed AFDs are in blue and the existing ones are in pink. With the one on the bottom right there, the inset one that has several parcels included is the is the large one that had multiple AFD applications together in there. And so that's them trying to piece together an AFD because they don't individually have the number of acres to qualify. So they're grouping together in order to create a new one. And I also have the chairperson from the AFD Advisory Committee here, and she would like to say a few words if if it would be appropriate now.
Sure.
Terry Adcock, fifty-seven nineteen Carters Road. Um, I'm the chair of the AFD. First, I want to thank this board because without every one of you, we would not be here today with all these parcels. When you reduce the fee, application fee to a hundred dollars, that brought people in. And when you gave us a budget, we were able to use that for the lunch and learn, which almost every one of these AFD people were there from it. And we visited every parcel and every AFD and met with all the owners and a wonderful group of citizens that want to put their property so that we can keep Palatine rural. And Bob Riley and myself and some of the AFD members are all here to answer questions as you go through them, if you have any. Thank you very much.
Do you have anything else to add to that?
I would just like to add that we are in favor of all of the proposed AFDs as the staff is looks favorably upon all of these ones as being good candidates.
Mr. Chairman, before we go forward really quick, can you go back to the map where you had the inset? Do you mind doing that? The other one, not that. That. The bottom piece where they join together to create a new AFD. What is the largest parcel there?
Not exactly able to see it from here, and I don't have the map in front of me.
The reason it's important is your core needs to be two hundred acres. So are you positive that the core of that is two hundred acres?
When combined.
But it can't be. But your core has to be two hundred acres.
It's two hundred acres in one parcel or contiguous parcels.
I thought the core was two hundred, but.
You know, I I pulled it up in case there's a question. The the course two hundred. Where that comes in is you couldn't, because technically, you know, parcels a mile away, those wouldn't count towards your core. So the contiguous parcels have to equal at least two hundred acres.
That's your only question?
Yep.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing up at this time. So anyone from the public that would like to come down and address the board, now is your opportunity.
Is this on all the AFDs, Mr. Chair?
All the AFDs, yes, sir. Six of them. Anyone online?
No, sir.
We'll close the public hearing. Comments? Board members, questions?
Can I make a motion?
Um, Mr. Chair. Sure, you can.
Approve all of the six listed AFDs that we have before us tonight.
Okay, is there a second? There's a second. Floor is open for comment, debate, questions. I have a question. The very first one, zero two zero two three dash one four. How many acres is in that particular AFD request for this citizen to join it? How many acres does that citizen own there? Is it doesn't say anything? Two acres, five acres, twenty acres?
The more one.
Okay. Okay. I don't know that I have a another question. Well, I may. I do have a question for Mr. Latchey. Assuming we approve all of these AFDs and the ones that exist, if you're an AFD property owner or you're in in an agricultural forest or district, which you apply for, pay your fee for, and of course, the board of supervisors has to approve it that you get in. If a person gets into that, and let's say they have a a ten-acre parcel. And at ten acres, under the county ordinance, you can have a family cut. And if you decide as a property owner that you have, you could have a hundred acres, you could have eighty acres, you could have twenty acres, but let's just say you have at least ten acres. And you want to do a family cut, which I think the minimum in the county is eight acres that you have to have in order to do a family cut. If you want to do the family cut, can you just go to the planning zoning and do your family cut, or does the board of supervisors have to approve your family cut?
Well, Mr. Chairman, as you were, we discussed this on the phone. I looked it up just to play it safe.
Yep.
There's actually an exception in state code for family divisions. It says those are allowed within an AFD. So a family division is allowed by state code.
Perfect. I just want people to understand when you get in, how these things work and make sure everything's explained to you, that you do understand. You know, you're you're what's happening if you decide to get out. If you decide to get out, for whatever reason, say you're going to sell your house, you know, something, situation changed, job, whatever change, and you want to sell your house. And when you go into an AFD, it's just like land use. A a person owns five acres of land somewhere, not in an AFD, and certainly not in land use, but I guess there's conditions where you could be in land use. And where your houses is, the property your house actually sits on is one acre of that five acres. That's what you get taxed on. You may your your assessed value of that one acre could be fifty thousand dollars or sixty thousand dollars or forty-five thousand dollars. And the other four acres that you own gets assessed at five or six thousand dollars. It's an assessed value, so it's 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 what the market value is of of your property. And when you go into an AFD or you stand or you go into land use, you pay a value, I believe, of four hundred and fifty dollars per acre. Does that sound right, Mr. Latchey? Four hundred and fifty dollars per acre.
It's something like that. I don't know the exact figure, but it's there's a state code section that sets the dollar value.
Right. So there's a there's a particular dollar amount that if you're in an AFD and the and the reward there is your, the reward of that is that you're not going to develop that property, which helps keep the rural character, as we all refer to, available in the county. But once you sell your property, is there a back tax consequence to an AFD member at that point?
Yeah, the only tax consequence is if you if you do something that it's more intensive than the existing use. If you start a business on it, build another house, anything more intensive would trigger rollback taxes.
If you have an AFD right now and there's a business operating on that AFD, are you qualified to be in that AFD?
I think it has to be agricultural and forestal purposes. I think that's defined in the state code. I'm not positive, but I think state code says it has to be for agricultural or forestal purposes.
Okay. Those are my only questions and comments. Anyone else have any questions, comments? So we have a motion on the floor to pass all of these. It's been seconded. We can do a roll call vote. Mr. Shardine.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. McClung.
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack.
Aye.
Mr. Byerly.
Aye.
All right. Our next public hearing is ordinance oh twenty twenty-three dash twenty. This is a rezoning. All right. Our next public hearing is ordinance oh, twenty twenty-three dash twenty. This is a rezoning from applicant Meek.
All right, this applicant has requested a rezoning from eight, ten agricultural ten to village residential on one point five five acres. Property is located in the Powhatan Village on the southbound side of Old Buckingham Road. There's the main entrance, if you will, to the existing houses on Old Buckingham. But the side parcels are facing Marion Harland Lane. The applicant has proffered, has made additional proffers in our conversations with the planning commission. Those proffers are in your packets. They were approved just about a week ago. And you can see that there will be no more than two new lots for single family homes. Houses must face Yates Lane or Marion Harland Lane. No garages in front of the house to replicate Aaron Hill. Garages must be located behind the house or side loaded only. Only two driveways to Yates Lane or Marion Harland Lane. There was a question about an open space requirement. Staff determined that there is an exception for single family buildings that does not require a commitment of open space. In addition, there's another exemption for the number of trips that are generated. Anything less than fifty trips per day would also not be required to submit a site plan. I believe the applicant is here. And if you'd like to speak on the matter or can answer questions. Original proposal was to for subdivide the lot into four new spaces. But the planning commission was uncomfortable with that, and so we came down to the two.
Would the applicant like to speak?
Thank you. Pat Meek, thirty seven ninety-one Old River Trail for forty-five years now. Basically, we've had this piece of property in the village for, oh, thirty years. And it's sitting there. It's agricultural. It's not helping the county any. It's not helping my granddaughter who wants to live there. So we just started want to rezone it from agricultural to residential. And I hope you approve that. Thank you.
Okay, thank you. Are you finished, Mike?
Yes, sir.
Okay. We'll open the public hearing up for this case now. If there's anyone from the public who would like to speak, the floor is open.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I'm from seventeen twenty-seven Teresa Lane. Could could they ask the applicant to have the they add a proffer to the proposed two houses along Marion Lane to include building a side a five foot wide sidewalk with a six foot wide grassy space between the street and the sidewalk? Basically, this basically like the sidewalk, the existing sidewalk in the village where it has like a grassy strip with trees on it by the courthouse, basically just like that when like just asking to build the sidewalk when they build the house like usually when they build a new house, when they built the houses in Irwin Hill, they would build the house and then they would build the sidewalk along with the house, and then the sidewalk would connect into each up into one another like a giant Lego set. Could they just ask them to proffer a sidewalk as each house is built? Also, I would like to support the original proposal of adding four lots to the property. But I think that this is a great, but I think this property will be this great. This development will be a great addition to the village of Powhatan.
Thank you, sir. Do we have anyone online?
No, sir.
Public hearing is closed. Board members, comments, questions?
Make a motion, Mr. Chair.
I have a question.
No.
Go ahead.
Mike, what about the issue based sidewalks? Is that something y'all requiring now in the village?
We do not require them in the village at this time.
Shouldn't we?
I think we should, yes. It would be consistent with the comprehensive plan, yes.
I would have thought we had had that in our development standards. So we have nothing.
At this time.
You recommend something going forward?
I do. And I recommend that we do. We're starting a Trails Master Plan that will include, hopefully include sidewalks in areas where we have more development so that we have a connected system, if not to build the sidewalks, then to at least provide a right of way or space for them in the future.
The resolution we have doesn't specify the number of single family dwellings.
It doesn't, but at the end of it, it says, I believe it says it references the proffers.
So you're going against the latest proffer that she submitted?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The other question is requirement for water and sewer.
Yes, it is required, as I believe is the policy of the of the county Public Works Department, that they would require this to connect with water and sewer. I believe it's private in this location.
That can be a slippery slope, can it?
Yeah, I have to admit, I'm not that familiar with it, sir.
That gets nuanced sometimes. You have in here that the existing home on the parcel does not have a legal recorded access easement. The easement will be drafted and recorded before the Board of Supervisors meeting to review this case. Has that been done?
It has been done, yes, sir.
That's my question. Thank you, Ms. Williams.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
One thing that I know she proffered two additional lots as opposed to as three, because that would make four. Being that we have very few areas in the county that allow for smaller lot development, do we want to let her go back to her original? But just throwing that out there, you know, her original request for three.
If I may, it would be consistent with the comprehensive plan. Comprehensive plan calls for four units per acre in this location. And it might be difficult to do it in this configuration. I don't know if we can go back to it. But I had worked on a alternative layout for that was based on cottage cluster of houses, which is attractive for people as they're particularly as they're aging in place. And that could be an option for her. That would also kick in the requirement for a site plan and then the reservation of open space that would be then accessible perhaps to the public, which would also be consistent with the comprehensive plan.
So if we go that route, she's almost more on the hook for doing a site plan and everything. And if we go with the lesser route, then she's, so does does the applicant have a preference one way or the other? I didn't know if you wanted that extra lot.
Yeah, I think that as long it concerns me. I mean, I included in the packet some of the images from the comprehensive plan, because I think the comprehensive plan gives excellent guidance for the way the village should be developing in the future. And additional guidelines, which is why I tried to insert those into the proffer. We don't want garage doors up front. So, you know, and the comprehensive plan is pretty specific about front porches, traditional architecture, et cetera, that needs to match now. I wish that we had a little bit more oversight once the buildings come in, but hopefully we'll work out a way to make sure that we can have more oversight about like, we don't have an architectural design board, for example. If we had one that might help us to ensure that whatever houses are built sort of meet the standards that are established in the comprehensive plan, that would be nice.
Now, why does it be, why does the reduction of one lot kind of usurp the need for going, having a site plan?
It wouldn't. If the strict definition in the ordinance, the exception is, it's not real clear, which shouldn't be a surprise. But it all it references single family development. So we had a conversation about what that, what does that mean? Does that mean a hundred single family residential properties is that exempt? No, it's not. And I think that that's then covered elsewhere in the subdivision ordinance. So I think a pure reading of it means a situation like this where you have a few single lots, not part of a larger whole. So, for example, I would argue that if she did go from two to four and and did something that was more cottage, single entrance with a single driveway, that that would tip this into site plan approval, which is, I would hope it would at least. But again, we have work to do on our ordinance to make sure that happens.
Yeah, I'm just looking to maximize the land in the village. I mean, I think it's it's a great area, and I think we should utilize every bit that we can.
I agree with you. It's fiscally, it's fiscally responsible to do that. I agree.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
I'm back to Mrs. Carmack's question, you know, about open space. I read something in an email that was going around this afternoon, I think it was around ten minutes to five. You had responded. And you said that if it was less than fifty trips, that was going to be generated from the development.
Yeah, that's an exception.
That was the exclusion that you used.
It was one of them. There were two.
There was others, but I remember that one.
Yeah, I remembered that because of transportation.
Indeed, I estimate each residential unit is nine point six or something like that trips per day.
Per day.
To your question, Mrs. Carmack, it wouldn't meet the threshold for open space. So you could go to four. But if you did, if you did go to four, the existing home, which has a well and a and a drain field, wouldn't they have to convert and hook up to water and sewer in the village?
I can't say for sure, unfortunately, but I would hope that that would be the case.
Okay.
I would hope that that would be the case because the existing.
I just heard the applicant say she just wants to get this done with the two, so.
The whether it's three or four, anything that gets built is going to be the private water company. She'll have to sign up to or or get hooked on that, hook up on that and with the county sewer assistance.
Yeah.
Exactly, Mr. Chair. Yeah, it doesn't matter if she does three or four. She's gonna, if she has, if it's a requirement that the existing house go to county water, it doesn't matter. I see exactly what you're saying.
Which raises another point, actually, for the applicant. The more units she already able to have, because it's not inexpensive to hook up to water and sewer. And I'm not sure of the location of the water and sewer lines in this case. I'm I'm fairly certain that they're they're along Old Buckingham. But I'm not certain.
I'm pretty familiar with them.
Yeah, are they along? That's right, you are.
I'm pretty familiar.
Are they?
They're on the other side of of what's now called Marion Harland. They're they're on the west side of that.
They are.
Is where the, that's where the sewer hookup is, is on the west side. And probably right across from where that that property is, pretty close to being right across from the manhole is there.
Okay, but not water.
Yeah, the water, you've got to go back up to at least the west of the Verizon building. I know there's there's hookup there. I don't know about the rest of it. It's got to be there somewhere. I don't know which side of thirteen it's on.
Yeah, so they were, if she were able to develop it more intensely, it might help to reduce the cost of connecting. And to your point, maximize the use of existing infrastructure, because there is infrastructure there.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, so.
So I'll ask the question. Would you proffer the sidewalks?
Her voice changed.
What's that?
Her voice changed.
Yeah, I thought I was like, sounded awful deep there, didn't it?
Could I recommend proffering the right of way for the sidewalks in the future, actually not building them, providing the
That's a good suggestion.
In the future.
That's a good suggestion.
We have our plan and we know where other sidewalks, rather than building a sidewalk that doesn't go anywhere. Now, we have at least we're planning ahead in the future. We're we're creating a space so that in the future, it may not, it would not be in this case, it wouldn't likely be the owner.
I I will just not interrupt you.
Yeah, sorry.
The sidewalk issue, I think Mr. Williams is right. It it needs to be in the ordinances and the sidewalks need to exist anywhere we're around in that village area. But I'm, I would be fine if 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 the right of way would exist and, you know, maybe the county. I know Mr. Schwendeman has done a lot of work on grants for money for sidewalks, and I hope he'll continue on that. And maybe we get a grant if we can't work through the applicant, but at least have the right of way to be able to do that.
Right.
Would that be okay? Motion.
Let me, I have just one more question.
Yes, sir.
You brought up a good point. Is the current house today occupied and are they intended to be part of the rezoning? And if they are part of the rezoning, are they going to be required to hook up to water and sewer?
They're part of the rezoning, so therefore they would have to hook up to the water and sewer, I would think.
Is that your understanding?
Yeah.
Okay, she's already on the water. So you're already on the water. So this the sewer is what would have to be hooked up there.
Would have to be hooked up there.
Yeah.
So everybody's clear on that?
Okay. Okay.
Um, I was going to make the motion, but personally, I think we should strike her proffer of the two lots and give her the flexibility of three. If you all are fine with that. You utilize it and reduce her infrastructure. I mean, that's.
Well, I'm I'm of the, you know, I I think that the village area is a very, you know, it's an interesting area that we have in the county that's very unique, I think, and and a great place for people to come and visit and live there if they can. And you need, there's not any land there. The land is, there's not any around. And they're not making any more. So I wouldn't be, I wouldn't object to that me, but I don't know what Mr. Williams and Mr. McClung would do.
I like the two, Mr. Chair. Wait, she can I speak?
Oh, yeah, absolutely. Yes, sir.
Miss Meeks, are you happy with what you proposed tonight, the two lots? Other than the easement for the sidewalk?
Thank you.
Mr. Chair, there's no rationale
Correct.
For just, just because you don't like the idea of the the ordinance says four units per acre. If you don't like the ordinance, then don't have that, but don't just make arbitrary, well, I don't like four units per acre, so, you know, we're going to force the applicant to do two. I just, I just fundamentally don't agree with that. If you have an ordinance, follow it. That's.
Looking at the layout, I wonder maybe a question for Mr. Latchey. To get the third lot, I think they're going to have a private road back to it. So would they need to come back before the board anyways for a private road approval?
I think I think they have access from two sides. I think they have, they have access from the side road as well, if I remember correctly, so.
Yeah. Now, another configure, we're getting into their own design, but if she read is, if she redeveloped the existing parcel with the house, that would be another way. I thought one way would, one thing to do, actually, I was going to recommend it to them, was to close the driveway that they have currently onto Old Buckingham and have a driveway that connects to the back and align three houses that where one would face Marlin and the other two would face that new drive that that went into the old house. I don't know if I can, you see what I'm saying? Let's see. Okay, so this driveway goes away. We have a new drive that doesn't do this, but does this. It comes out this way. And then we have one house that faces, because we need to have base, houses facing the street. And then this house, for example, could go and face this. And then this house, for example, could go and face this way and another one could face this way again, and then use that one drive that goes that way. So that would help actually improve circulation on Old Buckingham, which is one of our goals.
Yeah, you're saying move those houses, one house, the next house, and the third house.
That's correct.
And then have a new entrance come in over there.
That is correct, yeah.
I I I understand that.
Yeah. I do, yeah. Do you'd like to see the alternative layouts?
No, I I don't think so.
Yeah, personally, I'm, yeah, a motion.
What what we need is, we need a motion. I I that's, that's what we need. We need a motion and we're gonna move on.
Mr. Chair.
Yeah.
I move, we approve case two, three, zero, eight dash REZ, striking the limit on two lots.
So. You're gonna, what you want to do is strike the proffer of two limits. You 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 want it to be in developed into four single family, okay.
Yeah.
All right, so we need a second for that. I'll second it. Questions, comments?
Personally, I think this is a decent development. I think what she's proposing, I mean, I don't want to candidly have a I'm gonna be blunt, a two-two vote here and she doesn't get anything, so. You know, that's a risk, but at the same time, we're following our ordinances. So I, Mr. Latchey, this is a question for you. I think we all want her to get her development. It's the way of going about it.
Were your motions on the table? You got a second, depending on how the result, if it's passed, we're done. If it's not passed, another motion can be made.
Another motion can be made.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Roll call. It's Williams.
I'll make a comment before I vote, real quickly. I'm loathe to go out there and do something without a conceptual plan in front of me. I'm sorry. I have to see it and make sure that what's being talked about is actually represented and it's really something that I can get behind, so I'm gonna be voting no in this case.
Mr. McClung?
No.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
All right, I move, we approve case two, three, dash, zero, eight, REZ, as proposed.
Is there a second?
Second.
Well, a conversation, debate, comment? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
Next case is ordinance oh, twenty, twenty-three, dash, twenty-one, rezoning by Mr. Avery.
This project may look familiar to you. Apparently it has been in front of you in the past. It is a request to amend the original conceptual plan and proffers that were approved in August of two thousand eight, so I guess maybe not. The number of the lots will remain at thirty-four, however, the layout leaves more property undisturbed than there was originally. It also removes driveways that would enter and exit off of Route sixty. So you would have just one entrance. There is one other significant difference as well. In the original plan, there was let's see, there was a stub here that is not in the new plan. Oh, it's not showing on there. Oh, okay.
Yeah, if you blow it up, you can see it on this, it's, if you blow it up, you can see it. There's a stub, yeah.
Yeah, it's between thirteen and fourteen.
I apologize. Thank you.
So it is on there.
Yes, it is. Thank you, I forgot. It's been a while. And the applicant is here, if you have any questions.
Okay, would the applicant like to speak? Anyone have any questions? Okay, we'll open up the public hearing.
Could they take one of the four to five acre lots and create like two to four, like one acre lots for cheapy starter homes, for some starter homes? Instead of just, because, because buying five acres of land in Palatin is like, real, is really expensive.
Thank you, sir. You want to allow?
No, sir.
Close the public hearing.
Mr. Chairman, this is my district.
Yes.
I'll make a motion. I move, we approve oh, dash, two, zero, two, three, dash, two, one.
Second.
All right, any questions, comments? Roll call, Mr. Shorty.
Mr. Williams.
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. Motion passes.
Next case, another rezoning ordinance twenty, twenty-three, dash, twenty-two, Freeman.
Okay, this is a request to rezon text. Matt Parcel zero, four, one, C, dash, one, dash, one, seven. It's located at the corner of New Dorset Road and New Dorset Circle. It's located in the central part of the county from general commercial, which is currently to Commerce Center, which is the zoning that is, exists around it. So it is consistent with the adjacent properties and uses. It is also, it has been built as well. So why are we here? We are here because they're, at the time that they had to do their survey, they discovered that they were over by a foot and a half. Second, right? A tenth of a, tenth of a foot. Thank you. I said that last time and somebody corrected me. So yes, a tenth of a foot. So the only way we, it it wouldn't, you would say the decision was basically, we had a choice to go to the Board of Appeals. But there's no hardship. The other alternative would be to have them tear the building down and start over again and move it. Or to rezone it so that it would be consistent with the zoning around it, which would also change the setbacks that are required.
Anyone have questions? Questions for the applicant? Applicant, would you like to speak?
Would like to provide some clarity. Good evening. My name is Norm Walton, the engineer of record. Our office is three, seventeen Brook Park Place in Forest, Virginia. I would like to provide some explanation as how we got here. This is a design bill contract. I worked for WA Stratton and Company for Mr. Freeman, the owner. Mr. Stratton asked what size building we could get on this property with the setbacks. We told him sixty-six by one oh five, which is the metal building that he ordered. So if you look at the concrete foundation and the actual framing of the building, it is sixty-six by one oh five precisely. The corners of the building where there's finished architectural pieces to hide the metal framing as it comes to the corners is an inch and an eighth or one tenth of a foot in in thickness, which puts us out of compliance. So in all fairness, everything was done. We thought we were in compliance with the setbacks when we ordered the building. And then once everything got assembled, we realized these corner pieces were a little big and we were in violation. We had to provide a sealed survey to display such, and so that's the reason we're here. If you have any more questions, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone have any questions? We'll open up the floor for the public comment period or public hearing.
No, sir.
Seeing anyone, we'll close the public comment period or public hearing. Board members, questions?
Like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir, Mr. McClung.
Make a motion, we approve zero, dash, two, oh, two, three, dash, two, two.
Is there a second?
Second.
Questions, comments? Roll call, Mr. Shorty.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
All right, next rezoning case ordinance oh, twenty, twenty-three, dash, twenty-three, submitted by Mr. Knuckles.
Okay. This is a request in District Five to rezone parcel number twenty-two, dash, sixteen, which is currently general commercial to Commerce Center. The site is home to an existing building that I believe at one time was a repaired garage. The property is one point one acres. It's located at the intersection of Route sixty and Ballsville Road. The comprehensive plan designates the property as rural and crossroads on the future land use map. And the question, I believe, is why, why CC Commerce Center when it's a crossroads? That was the request made by the applicant. I think it's because they would also like to have auto sales, the repairs, if I understand it correctly. And Nate, you're here if you want to talk about it. For future use, it's not allowed in the crossroads district.
Woody Coe for Patan, Virginia. On the commercial and crossroads, you're not to have, not allowed to have mechanical shocks on it. I think this project has been a shop ever since I've been right here for fifty some years. Somebody got it, so now he wants to go to CC District, which is allowed. That's where he wants to mechanic and have storage in the back. So entertain the questions y'all have.
Anyone have questions for the applicant? Thank you, Mr. Goff. This time we'll open up the floor, the public hearing. Anyone in the public would like to speak? Anyone on line?
No, sir.
Not seeing anyone, we'll close public hearing. Board members, comments, questions?
Mr. Chair, I'll make a motion.
Yes, ma'am.
I move, we approve oh, dash, two, zero, two, three, dash, two, three.
Second.
That's good, when you get second, you don't even ask for it, huh? Questions, comments by board members?
Okay, I have a, not so much of a question, but a statement. The future land use map calls for crossroads development, and we have specified uses. So it's not about today or necessarily about thirty years ago. It's about the future. And my only concern is if we start changing what we're looking out for, not just today, but for the future, and are going to go by what was something in the past, let's go thirty years, I have them many years back. Are we defeating ourselves? We're supposed to be forward looking, thinking about the future of this county and how we want to develop. Now, I can understand the argument that, well, it was general commercial and we said, you know, we wanted to get rid of transition districts and we would go to commerce, and I understand that. But what gives me a concern is what we're saying about future development. Again, not just today, but for the future. Do we want to be, continue to be guided by something in the past? Or do we want to be looking at today or the future? Those are my comments.
Thank you, sir. Roll call, but Mr. Shorty?
Mr. Williams?
No.
Mr. McClung?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye.
All right, moving on to our next case. Got a few more public hearings, but this is our last rezoning of the evening. Ordinance oh, twenty, twenty-three, dash, twenty-four, REZ, Stave Mill Parking Lot Project.
Okay, this is a request for a rezoning of the part of a parcel that is located behind the future Wawa located on Anderson Highway. The parcel is at the corner of Irvine Road and Stave Mill Road, as you can see. The intention of the applicant is to provide additional parking on this location. And because they've reconfigured the original site plan, this project has quite a few layers to it at this point. But it will require moving the location of the stormwater facility. There is also a limit on the amount of impervious surface area they can have here. I think it's sixty percent. So they'll need to be careful when they get to site plan to ensure that they have met those standards if the rezoning is approved. Their only use intended here is as parking.
Comments?
I have a question.
Yeah, go ahead, Mr. Williams.
Are we doing a rezoning?
You are during a rezoning on just a corner piece.
And we're rezoning it to Commerce Center?
Yes, to match everything.
And the use is parking lot?
Parking lot, yeah.
Which is a permitted use.
Yes.
I I I'm just, my comment is, I'd like to have had that map in the packet to see that, you know, and 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 so we'd have it there to 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 know exactly what was going on. The it's just that back corner that is a separate property owner that wants to rezone to commerce, only for parking.
Correct.
Okay. Anyone else? Comments, questions? We'll open up the public hearing.
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendman. Could they ask them to build a sidewalk along the outer perimeter of the property along Urb- the section along Irvine, Stave Mill and Route sixty? Because across the street from that zoning case, there's a sidewalk system that follows Stave Mill Road and it connects the gas station and the Dollar Tree and and the car wash in in Goodwill. And there's also a sidewalk system where there's sidewalks on both sides of the streets along Irvine Lane. And if you walk straight across state, the sidewalk on Stave Mill Road, on Stave Mill Lane, it'll take you to this big development, which would basically, if they added a sidewalk to the to the outer edge of this, along those roads, it would, it would double the size of the Stave Mill sidewalk system. And there's also a sidewalk that comes out of Walmart that that could get extended in the future to connect into it.
Thank you, sir.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeff Geiger, here on behalf of the applicant. Could I get the layout back up on the TV? I I'd just like to come forward, kind of give the board an update on what what are we doing? What's going on? I think that might be helpful.
Thank you.
As you, you may have known for a while now, the old shopping center has been under contract for. As you, you may have known for a while now, the old shopping center has been under contract for redevelopment. And a Wawa is coming forward by right on the existing parcel. There is additional land on that parcel for another commercial use, another opportunity to expand upon the commercial tax base for the county and use the road infrastructure that was put in a long time ago with the realignment of Stave, Stave Mill, Irvine, on the intersection that took place here. We have a user that's interested in coming in to where you see proposed commercial building, and we would like to have more parking to serve both uses, the Wawa and the future user on the proposed, proposed commercial building. We can park the Wawa from a minimum perspective on the land that is the shopping center today. That's not the issue. We would just like to have some more convenient parking to make sure that the customers who are coming to both locations have beyond the minimum to us, to the users that are coming. These are auto-centric uses that we, where customers expect to have available parking. Now, we would like to provide that customer service. So the request here is to just change the zoning from one commercial district to the next so that we can have the same commercial zoning upon the same parcel that will become the parcel for the proposed commercial building. Would like to let you know, as you may know already, it is the Wawa that we'll be putting in the second left from Route sixty to Stave Mill. It was going to be a county project, but the developer agreed to put it in in lieu of the county having to spend the funds for that. About to answer any questions that you may have?
Does anyone have any questions? Thank you very much. For those that didn't hear that last comment, the developer has agreed to put in a second turn lane westbound on Route sixty into Stave Mill Road. And that was a county project in, that the developer has agreed to do, which helps the county out tremendously.
Did not see anyone. No, sir.
Public hearing is closed. Board members, comments, questions?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair.
Yes, Mr. McClung.
I'd like to make a motion to approve O dash two oh two three dash two four.
Is there a second?
Second.
Okay. Comments, questions? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mrs. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Byerly.
Hi.
Motion passes.
Our next two public hearings relate to budget amendments. First is Resolution R twenty twenty-three dash thirty-nine. This is amending fiscal year twenty twenty-four budget for the Fire Station One expansion. This is something we've discussed over a couple workshops. Most recently, the board committed to the project and funding some of the cost increases we've seen on that to move the project forward so that we can bid it out to construction. But because of the, the amount of the change, it does require a public hearing. And we have our finance director, Ms. Charlotte Schubert, here if there are any questions.
Anyone have any questions for Ms. Schubert? Okay. We'll open the floor up for the public hearing. Anyone from the public that would like to come down and speak? Anyone online?
No, sir.
Public hearing is closed. Board members, comments? Questions? Motions?
I'd like to make a motion, Mr. Chair, to approve Resolution R dash two oh two three dash three nine.
Is there a second? Comments, questions? Debate?
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
As you all know, I was not in support of this way back when the initial bump in cost came to light, and I will not be in support of this. I think it's an astronomical amount of money for what we're getting. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? And I'll reiterate my position on that, which was maybe we should have a different location. But I'm not the expert when it comes to this field. I just think that maybe we could have another location somewhere else in the county that we could service more taxpayers. Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mrs. Carmack. Mr. Byerly.
Hi.
You voted aye.
The next public hearing is Resolution R twenty twenty-three dash forty-five, another budget amendment. This one is relating to the Turner Field Concession Project. Similarly, from the time the project was initially planned in the CIP and budgeted to cost estimates, now there is a gap in funding, which again, at the recent workshop, the board committed to close that gap with funding, but a public hearing is required.
Anyone have any questions? We'll open the floor for the public hearing now. Anyone online?
No, sir.
We'll close the public hearing. Comments? Motions? I'll make a motion that we approve Resolution R twenty twenty-three dash forty-five, amending the fiscal year twenty twenty-four Palatine County operating budget by budgeting and appropriating one million, two hundred and twelve thousand, six hundred and forty-three dollars and fifty-four cents for Turner concession project.
Sucker.
Comments, questions?
I'd like to make a comment. I think the last two resolutions that we just approved shows the importance that when we decide that we are going to do a project, we need to do it and move forward. The longer that we wait, the more these prices just keep going up and up and up. We saw it with the prime example, the convenience center. We approved that back in twenty eighteen, the proceeding board. And we have been literally doing nothing with that for years. We, we're paying money on the money we borrowed, and we're doing nothing. Same thing. We've approved these now for years and, or several years at least, and we're still, you know, not doing anything with them. So I think it just distressed the importance to the incoming board. You approve something, shove it along and make sure it gets done. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Any other comments? Questions? I've, I've got a couple things to Ms. Carmack's point. Just a educational purpose. If we approve something, Mr. Latchney, tonight, and in the motion, is there a way that you could put a timeframe on that?
I, I don't know which.
Time limit. In other words, if we approve the fire station, it has to be done within a five-year period of time.
Well, you, you can, but technically that doesn't bind the next board if they don't want to be.
They can change it.
Yeah, they can change it.
Got it. Okay. So then my next question, or not question, but comment is, you know, in, in Palatine County, it's kind of amazing to me. There's, I, I asked this question today of a deputy county administrator in the Parks and Rec. How many porta-johns are throughout the county at Parks and Rec's property? Porta-johns. We just approved a four plus, four and a half million dollar addition to a fire station. And fires important, don't get me wrong. Don't get me wrong at all. The safety of the people in this, in this county is extremely important. And we have fourteen or fifteen porta-johns that people come here, and this is what they see is porta-johns. Palatine County. I, I, it just, I, I, I think we can do better. I think we are better, and I hope that the next board will do something to, you know, maybe look at that or talk about that. It's expensive and it's hard decisions, and it's, it's very hard decisions, but for me personally, I, I, I kind of like, I think Mr. Coper said, I've been in this county for fifty-plus years. And I, my kids played ball at Turner Field, and the concession stand that was there then is the same concession stand there today. And it's, it's very disappointing. It's very disappointing. So did I get a second to my motion?
Yeah.
I think I did, Mr. McClung. Any other questions, comments? Roll call.
Mr. Williams.
Hi.
Mr. McClung.
Hi.
Mrs. Carmack.
Hi.
Mr. Byerly.
Hi.
All right. Our last public hearing for the evening ordinance O twenty twenty-three dash twenty-five. This is a county-initiated amendment to the subdivision ordinance.
I'll kick it off, Tom, and, and I'll go to pass it off to you.
Well, before you kick it off, I'd like to make at least one comment that, that everybody's aware of. In, in the packet on page four oh nine, where it says, whereas the planning commission voted to recommend approval of this request at its meeting on November twenty-first, twenty twenty-three. Is that a correct statement or incorrect?
It is incorrect.
May I pardon?
It is incorrect.
Okay, thank you. Go right ahead, Mr. Sorillo.
Okay. There are two parts to this. One is referencing private roads. That is Section sixty-eight dash one eleven. And the second section or second part of this is Section sixty-eight point one seventy-five. The first one, sixty-eight point one eleven, is about private roads, and the point at which a private road submittal will receive either staff approval or be passed along to the board supervisors. That is a return to what we had done previously. The second point, however, sixty-eight dash one seventy-five, this is a change. This, this, this did not exist previously. And that is limiting the number of access points in, to a parcel to just one. So that is a, that is, that is new. So there, I think there's been some confusion on this point. The changes to the language are above. There, the changes would be, you can see a redlined and crossed out. I hope you can read them. Guessing maybe not, but the first case, it does indicate that the number of lots that would kick it to you all would be changed to. And then the second piece, the language would again, would limit the number of access points for subdivision to one. And Tom, do you want to add to this?
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, if you recall, we had, this, this was prompted by a discussion we had, I think, back in August about the development that happened out on Route sixty, the stables, which is a whole series of driveways connecting out onto sixty. And unfortunately, on a hill and a fifty-five mile an hour road, which prompted a discussion about that technically, right now, you can, if you got the road front, and you can buy right road strip and put in as many access points as you want pretty much anywhere in the county. And so we, in September, I brought you a proposed draft ordinance, which was what you saw up there. Dealt with two things. First, the private road approval. We were, I think staff felt like they had, they were mandated to approve two lot private roads, and we were approving all of them, and we created some pretty interesting configurations with two lot private roads. So the first part, I think the board was unanimously in agreement. That needs to come back to the board and not be staff approval. The planning commission deadlocked on whether to recommend this, so they technically didn't recommend it. But the planning commission, I, I don't think I'm misrepresenting to say they were universally fine with the returning to the two lot standard. Nobody seemed to object to that. The second part, we talked about, if you recall, we had inadvertently, or we, we did it on purpose, but we didn't think through the ramifications. We deleted, deleted all of our access management standards. The goal was to delete them for commercial and default to VDOT, and VDOT has some standards when it comes to the commercial. We also deleted them for our residential. VDOT has no standards on residential. They'll let you put a driveway every fifteen feet if, if, if it's applied for me. But VDOT, I mean, we might not allow it because we don't allow pipe stems, but VDOT has no standards on driveways, none. Their, their interpretation of their obligation is they have to approve every driveway application that comes along. So the question was, came up at the September meeting. In August and September, how do we restore our access management standards? And as we discussed in September, and, and as Mike and I discussed, the problem is we probably need different standards for different roads. There needs to be a different access management on sixty, on seven eleven, on five twenty-two, at least north of sixty. You know, Jude Ferry may need different standards than southern part of thirteen. So the difficulty is there's no way to do that quickly. Staff needs to analyze traffic patterns, traffic flows, how to, how to develop standards that are applicable in the various sections. So we discussed in September, and what you have before you is a proposal to temporarily limit access to one entry. If you're going to subdivide, one entrance. And if you want more than one entrance, you got to come to the board. And, and so that's what's before you. I, I, based on rep, what was presented by citizens, in fact, a couple of them are here, and may, may make the statement again. I have a couple of suggested changes. If I could get Katie, can you put up what I, based on citizen input? A lot of people were concerned, or I say a lot, the people that spoke were concerned about losing their ability to have multiple entrances, and then it did, it didn't make sense necessarily everywhere in the county to have a single entrance. And, and I don't disagree with that. And so if you can go down to the second page. Two suggested changes that I'm, I'm recommending. One of them, it said, where it can be demonstrated upon review of site specific, and we had traffic impact analysis. As we discussed in the planning commission, that's an expensive proposition just because somebody wants to put three driveways. So I recommend we change the traffic impact analysis to traffic patterns, that you analyze the traffic patterns in a particular area. The other thing, the original language said, for you guys to approve it would require the safety and efficiency of the travel on the thoroughfare would be improved. Uh, Mr. Anderson is sitting back there, actually recommended that this alternative language, which I thought was very well reasoned and made more sense, says it will not be negatively impacted. So what does all this mean? What this means is if you want more than one entrance, you can still get more than one entrance. We're not taking that ability away. What this would do is say, if you want more than one entrance, you need to come to the board. This may be particularly helpful to the next board so they can kind of get a feel for the patterns of development and how often this is happening. My recommendation that planning commission in here would be this is only temporary until staff gets drafted new access management standards that apply to the various parts of the county, at which point this would become redundant and really not necessary. So I, I've talked a long time. I, I don't know if that made sense. If anybody has any questions.
Mr. Chairman.
Yes, Ms. Carmack.
The access management standards we had before didn't limit spacing in driveways. I mean, I, I know for a fact because down Mannequin Town Ferry Road, there was road stripping of driveway, 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 driveway. So it's not like we got rid of these access management standards, and then all of a sudden this problem was created. Um, I think, I mean, personally speaking, I think having one access per parcel is, that's even as a temporary stopgap. I don't think that's good. I mean, it's, you could have somebody that has two thousand acres, and you're going to tell them they only have one, one access. So I am not going to be in support of that. I think having it come back, obviously, come back to the board is fine. I thought more or less what we discussed in September kind of goes back to exactly what you said. We were going to look at various roads. Obviously, if you're on Route sixty and you have driveway, driveway, driveway coming out, that's a lot more critical than if you have it on something, you know, Schroeder, I don't know if Schroeder Road's a good example, but something with a lot less, you know, cars that are traveling. And the other thing I thought we were going to discuss was, or kind of look at, was the spacing requirement kind of between each driveway.
Those were the things we discussed. If you, at that September meeting, when I proposed this as a stopgap solution, as I pointed out, until we do something, you can keep doing as many driveways as you want on sixty or on seven eleven. And we did agree that the ultimate goal is different standards and spacing standards, entrance standards for various parts of the county. The problem is that's a much more complex ordinance to create and will take more effort. So again, this, this doesn't force somebody to have a single entrance. It just forces them to come to the board if they want. It just forces them to come to the board if they want multiple entrances. So the board can analyze these and say, yeah, you know, what I envision happening is on 60, we'll say no, and maybe on Schroeder Road, we say, sure, we don't care.
But isn't that legally a little dicey? It seems kind of arbitrary.
No, it's based on an analysis of, it has to be based on something. In this case, it's based on traffic analysis. It's saying the board's gonna make its decision based on the flow of traffic on that particular road. But so it's not arbitrary in the legal sense.
Yes, Mr. Williams.
Ms. Carmack made the statement that we didn't have spacing standards for residential. I believe that's correct. Now, we did for commercial. And it was based on the classification of the road. Okay? If you had a private road, or if you had a local road, minor arterial, arterial, or arterial road, you had different spacing standards that went away. So that's one issue. You know, we had this issue on Route 60 just recently next to Sheets or up in that area, where we were looking at VDOT giving a waiver to their access management standards, which are minimum standards. And the issue came up with the planning director, he and I talked about it, was we don't have anything today that protects us from Route 60 developing stripped with multiple accesses. Because what's coming in today is only based on traffic counts today. It's no 20-year projections. So it's based on today. And so when you start adding up those waivers, that work fine today, don't they? But are they gonna work fine five, 10 years? That was the whole reason for access management. It was about preserving safety and capacity for our roads, not just today, but for the future. That's gone. So let's get back to the issue right now with residential. You can go back and you can do the spacing for commercial, and you can do it by classification of road. Bushland does that today. We used to do it, but that got taken out. Let's go back to the issue now where we say, if you own a parcel of land, like over on Mannequin Town Ferry Road, or over on Petersburg Road, where we just saw tonight, where you can come in by right, and if you got the road frontage, as the chairman pointed out, you can do the 10 acre cuts right along. You don't have to do one entrance. The intent was always to consolidate entrances such that you wouldn't do, as Owen Walker used to talk about, road stripping. And that's what we're doing today. So my question today is, what are you gonna do to prevent the road stripping when you've got 100 acres or 1,000 acres or something like that, and you've got the road frontage? Are you gonna continue to let an applicant come in and by right, do as many entrances as they can squeeze in with 215 foot road frontage? That's the question. And what are you gonna do to address that? When you see that somebody's coming in and they're doing those multiple cuts, are you gonna require them to do some type of rezoning or private road subdivision to consolidate the entrances and take away that by right road stripping? That's the question.
I think that's part of, we've had conversations on whether we want to go with clustering, and those are gonna be single entrance, where we're consolidating and keeping open spaces. But those are the discussions that need to be had. The whole point is right now, we just saw one on tonight's agenda.
I'm trying to get my arms around where you're going right now, because I wanna make sure that we have all the concerns on the table right now. So I've gone through just my two concerns right now.
What you have in front of you right now would create a requirement that if you want to create more than one entrance, you gotta come get the board to sign it, just like you just did on the private road on the item 10A.
Let me, let me talk about that. Okay, let me talk about that. So if I've got 1,000 acres and I want to cut off at the other end of my property and sell 100 acres, are you saying then, you know, under our current way this structured, I could only have one entrance? Because that doesn't make sense. Okay? Now, getting into this qualification of studying traffic patterns, who's gonna do that? Mrs. Carmack's raising, shaking her head up and down. We don't have anybody that can do that. Okay? And then now you're getting into the subjective arena. So I'm not gonna be for that. Okay, just like when you go back and you read about private roads may be permitted as an exception to construction and dedication of public roads. And you go on to say, well, the circumstances were contained there herein, considering the impacts of the, you know, insensitivity to the natural characteristics of the environment. We have never looked at that, not the first time. That's word salad. We have never applied any of those criteria to our approval of a private road. So you've got multiple issues here. You've got commercial development spacing based on the classification of roads. Mrs. Carmack's issue of that, we don't have any limitations today on road stripping. You can do it. There's nothing to stop it, and she's right. Road, you know, entrances, you know, VDOT's gonna approve them right along. You're entitled to an entrance for residential. So the question comes in, well, we know somebody's gonna be developing residentially, whether by rights, which is something the county administrator has pointed out to us, we don't see it. We don't see it. We're waking up today because of Staples, where we found out that people were circumventing the intent of our ordinances. And we were complicit in going along with it, and now we got a public safety problem. And the question is, what are we gonna do about it? You've got multiple issues here, and I'm not sure you can, you can resolve them just with what we're talking about tonight. But your problem solving starts with problem identification. Let's get them all out on the table, and then you're gonna have to have some type of comprehensive workshop or series of workshops to get this resolved. You're not gonna do it tonight. You might attempt to do something tonight, but you're not gonna solve the problem tonight. Those are my comments, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. We're gonna take a five-minute recess before we open up the floor for the public hearing. Okay. Good comments by everybody. I've got a couple of questions and maybe comments to go along with this and ensure that I understand what we're doing or not doing. Right now, if you have a 10 acre parcel, you have an access point.
Correct.
The two lot private road problem, it's not an issue, it's a problem that Mr. Williams brought up on Route 60. And it, it does create a little bit of a, probably not a little bit, wrong choice of words there, but it does create a safety issue. From, from the current ordinance that we have says, if you have a 10 acre lot, you cut 10 acres, as long as you have 215 feet of road frontage, you can put a driveway there. Me personally, I don't have a problem with that ordinance, the way that ordinance is at 215 feet. I think, you know, whether staff makes the decision on a two lot private road, or we bring that back to the board and let the board make it, you know, I'm okay with that. But I'm gonna tell you right now, I'm not really in favor of changing it ordinance because we had an employee error. I'm not. If there's a way we can take and make our ordinance better, maybe there's a way we can do that. I think that, you know, when, when you start talking about different major arterial roads, 711, 60, 522, Route 13. I mean, do, do you know, Tom, what the, what it is on 711 right now? How close a driveway can be? What's, what is it on 711?
Well, anywhere in the county, if you, as long as you can get 215 feet strips of land, you can put as many as you want.
What if you have, you know, a thousand, let's not say a thousand, let's just say you have 800 acres and you're on 711. Can you do every 215, or is it?
Yes.
So you can do as many as you want.
As many as you can get your property to stretch to, yes, correct.
And that becomes a little more cumbersome, according to what you're saying, to write an ordinance with, with that, a 215, or you're starting, talking about arterial roads, Route 60, Route 522, major roads in the county. It becomes a little more cumbersome or difficult to have a code, an ordinance written, and then have it, that it's enforceable.
To have a good ordinance is gonna be, have certain layers of complexity. Because a good ordinance is gonna take into account existing driveways. And do we want spacing from existing driveways? You know, is it, or do we just pretend your driveway is the only one? And so your ordinance is, a good ordinance is gonna have language talking about existing driveways, and maybe there's different spacing standards from a virgin development area as opposed to in the middle of several existing driveways. Those are the things that staff has got to wrestle with and come back with language on. And that's the complexity that I was referring to.
So if, if I had whatever, 30 acres, and I cut two lots off, based upon what you're saying, do I need to come before the board of supervisors to get approval to get a driveway put in?
If, if you were to adopt this, then it would, if you wanted to do three driveways, you would need to come to the board of supervisors to sign off on three driveways. If you wanted to put a three lot private road, you could do it that way, or you could ask for three entrances, yes. Either way, the, the point of this was the board would see it.
And I, I understand the point of the safety concept of that, you know, we don't want driveway, 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 driveway. I don't think we want that at all. And I, I get the, you know, we had an access management standard that applied to commercial, not residential, and that access management standard, I mean, I won't say every time, but probably eight out of 10 times, we waived it. And to me, I, I, I'm, I think we're trying to change an ordinance based upon an issue that we have in-house that we need to take care of. And when it comes to this situation for me, for me, I like the ordinance we have. I'm fine with that ordinance. And is there something that we can do, whereas if somebody has 800 acres and, you know, the infamous thing that's gonna be said for the, probably the rest of this meeting and the next meeting is let the next board deal with it. Personally, I'm elected until December the 31st of 2023. So I'm in favor of doing something on it and moving on it. Band-aiding it is not something that I care about, temporary. Let's do something. And if what we do needs more research and development over the next board, that's their right, and that's the board that the people elected. But until December the 31st, 2023, you get Mike Byerly in District 3. That's just how that is. The I'm not in favor of changing this. I'm just, that's where I'm at on it. Anybody else, you know, I only have one vote and it takes a majority to get that done, but I'm not in favor of changing it, so. From there, if there's anybody else who wants to make a comment, you know, time to speak up. I guess we can open up the floor for the public hearing and hear what the public has to say on that. We'll do that right now. We'll make the floor open so the public can come in and have, they can have their input.
My name is Darlene Bolland. I live at 630 Petersburg Road. You may recognize that last name because my former mother-in-law, over the course of the holiday weekend, we were discussing this, and she's 80 years old, and I think you all should have gotten a lot from her, because she asked me, what can I do about this? What if I get in a predicament that I need some income to take care of me so I can stay at home? She's got, they got beautiful property. It borders Air Farm. I never want to see any kind of subdivision there, whether it be private road, public road, anything. But as far as a single cut here or there, to, to get her income, where she can remain in her home for the rest of her days, I'm all for it. And that could very well happen, a stopgap like what you're talking about. There may not be time for her to have a stopgap if something were to happen. So I'm speaking, you know, just making sure, in case you didn't get to read that, that, that she would not be in favor of this. The 68-111, the fact that the board can approve two to 10 lot private roads, I think that's wonderful. In fact, the, the first thing you came up tonight was the subdivision down the road, again, from me on Petersburg Road, that my family has farmed ever since I was a little girl, and I myself still cut hay on it up until the man died three years ago. And then his four children, which none of them grew up there, had no attachment to it, decided they want to sell it. It, I lost sleep over it. It's a beautiful farm, but the applicant, because of what happened, he'd already had the contract. What happened down on Route 60, he was not able to do what he wanted to. Therefore, the long, skinny, unappealing lots on that property. They're not 215 feet for 10 acres. It was 215 feet for a lot of acres, like 20 some acres, 30 acres, which was very unappealing. So I do appreciate that you all allowed him to make that change. I, I, I don't agree with the 68-175 of having one single road access, and that farm is another good example. It's 176 acres divided right down the middle by an ingress and egress easement. So if you were to adopt that one driveway per access, then one side could have one private road, then the other wouldn't be able to have a road at all. Doesn't make sense. Each parcel's different in Powhatan. This would probably affect farmers more than anybody else. We want to keep the county rule, and if farmers have a way to utilize their land, maybe some of it's wooded that's not being farmed, and be able to make a cut to get income, then this, this type of thing you're talking about would prohibit it. I agree with what a lot of you all are saying up there. We need more ads on these applications for these subdivisions. If this, if, don't do the single private road, but any subdivisions per se, go ahead and come before the board instead of adding this language to it. Let the board decide in the end, hey, is this applicable? Is this creating too many lots with narrow road frontage? I would wholeheartedly agree with that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Kristi Elliott, currently at 3471 Anderson Highway. Hopefully sometime in the next year to be on 2020 Rocky Ford Road, although quite a trip that's been. So I have 40 acres on Rocky Ford Road, all road frontage. If you, if I have to come to the board, if I want to do 10 acre lots, I can do four 10 acre lots. Before that, in the old comprehensive plan, my property was RR2, Rural Residential 2. Now, let's look across the street at me. Do I need to say anything about those areas? Those are anywhere between two and five acre lots. So if you look at a situation like that, and you say, well, there's too many driveways here on this road, you can have one for your 10 acre lot, because the individuals that live across the street, which could clean their yard up, by the way, they, they're anywhere between two and five acre lots. Now, let's talk about my property. While I'm working on building this house, they want to look at my plat. Well, I go down to the courthouse because the only thing I have is a piece of parchment paper. Well, guess what they've got? Piece of parchment paper. They go, where's, where's your plat? I go, it's right here on this piece of parchment paper. So now I'm gonna have to come to the board and ask them, can I have a driveway? Are they gonna say, across the street, there's eight, and you can't have but one? Anyway, that's my opinion.
Thank you, ma'am.
My name is Woody Kofa, Powhatan, Virginia. Uh, I have two things I'd like to talk about. Y'all gonna approve this lot that, uh, ordinance that says for two lot private road has to be approved by the board? All right, under this same ordinance, you're saying that, uh, I'm only allow one access per partial. I've got a couple jobs I'm doing right now. I'm cutting off, uh, twelve acres and a fourteen acre tract off of different projects. But under that, it only allowed one entrance onto that partial. So therefore, before I can cut it off and get it approved, I get to bring it to the board. So what's the time limit for me to bring this to y'all's board? I mean, y'all come with a month or two months like a private road? I mean, this is a private road I gotta get done. So what's it, is there gonna be a time limit on it? It's gonna take me two months till it, people will be two months or more before I can get it approved? Uh, another thing I'd like to ask about is, this does not affect seven eleven. Seven eleven always has a spacing requirement of six hundred and some feet. So this does not affect that, is my understanding. That's my only two questions. I don't think you need to prove it like it is tonight. Thank y'all.
Thank you.
Could they factor in things like speed limit and, and traffic volume? Because I kind of feel like with the driveways, I think that when a road is like a speed limit lower than forty miles an hour and it's low traffic, I don't think it's really a problem. But I kind of think that with a road like Route sixty and maybe five twenty-two and seven eleven, depending on traffic on the, on the bad shape of the road, they need to like, um, like for Route sixty, they need to actually start building front, they actually need to spend the money to build frontage roads and then let everybody hook as many driveways as they want to the frontage road. And they should require that Route sixty only have the access that Route sixty needs should be only turn lane, or be required for their traffic lights and turn lanes. Because the reason why Hall Street and Broad Street and Short Pump turned into a, into a disaster was that they just kept letting them build driveways. Because when I drive down Route sixty in Chesterfield, I noticed that they just let them build driveways every ten feet along Route sixty. And I think that they need to start actually closing up driveways along Route sixty and building the frontage roads to divert the local traffic to the frontage roads.
Thank you, sir.
David Anderson, twenty-three sixty-six Belkrus Circle, uh, Powhatan. Before y'all started discussing the proposal tonight, I was going to say a lot of things against the proposal. I think it's incomplete. And I'm not going to go through all that because it sounds like premature discussion that you don't believe it's ready. Um, so I'm not going to repeat a lot of things that have, uh, been said tonight. But I will say just two quick things. And the first one is, um, throughout the course of this meeting, since the meeting started, we've talked about ordinances and we've said, hey, the ordinances we've got are unclear, they're not complete. Um, we've even talked about, hey, we don't like the ordinance personally, we're going to override what's in the ordinance, that's, you know, whatever. But the last thing I believe we need to do is knowingly pass an ordinance that we know is flawed. We don't need another flawed ordinance floating around the county. And then we're going to rely on hope that we're going to change the ordinance at some point down the road. Hope does not make good public policy and I'm urging you not to trust hope in this case. In fact, it sounds like from, I hear a lot of good ideas that are floating around and it's not that difficult. In fact, some of you are going to have a little free time coming up. You'd be a great advisory board to solve this issue. And the, and the last thing I'll say is, and this, I guess, is looking to the future board and county administration. When we believe that we have a problem, and I almost think that this has been viewed as an emergency, that we need to treat it as an emergency. We can't say we have an emergency and then treat it as business as usual. If we have an emergency, Mr. Uh, Williamson and I clearly said, hey, we've got a problem. And that's been echoed. That needs to be really clear to the public. And then we need to say, we need to create a sense of urgency to go solve the problem. And then we need to make sure that we've got people and the resources lined up to go deal with the problem. That's what you do when you have an emergency. You can't treat it as business as usual. And I think Mr. Latchney said y'all been talking about it since August or September. Well, three months is a pretty long time, right? And if we had everything lined up and people ready to go and we needed a priority, I bet we could have solved this in three months. And so I urge you as you move forward and the county administration moves forward, that you get serious about problems. Um, because they're not going to solve themselves. Thank you for your service as always.
Thank you.
Anyone online?
Yes, sir.
We'll close the public hearing. Board members, comments, questions?
I got one, Mr. Share.
Yeah.
I just feel like this is being rushed through and, um, I won't be supporting any of it. I think, I do need, we need to address the situations in the future. Um, but for tonight, it's, I just, I just feel like it's being rushed through and I don't have enough information, as Mr. Cox always says. I don't have enough information to, uh, make a decision. Thank you, sir.
Anyone else? Yep, Ms. Carmack.
I think this is maybe another thing that's, um, it could be overthinking a little bit. The roads that we're concerned about, it's not a mystery. We're concerned about seven eleven, five twenty-two and Route sixty. That's been the impetus pretty much for most of the dialogue. So instead of, like it was suggested, you know, we create an ordinance to try to fix problems, why don't we, if we're really worried about the road stripping on those particular roads, just have it written such that any driveways coming off one of those three roads has to come before the board and the rest stays the same. I mean, I'm just offering a suggestion. I mean, as a stopgap, that seems to me like that would, you know, cut the bleeding. A question really quick, the, the stables, the, are each of those spacings two hundred fifteen feet?
Uh, I think a couple of them may be slightly short of that, but I, I think they are basically that.
But so my question is, is we have this ordinance where they have to be two hundred fifteen feet and we're not even following that?
I'm not sure. They may all be two fifteen. Do you remember?
Yeah.
They are.
They are all two fifteen. Okay. So even if we leave the ordinance exactly as is, we will still have that two fifteen, we agree on the major arterials is probably too short of spacing. Am I correct in this assumption? Okay.
But you remember, we still have that same problem.
A hundred percent, but until we worry about what the spacing should be, which is going to take a little more analysis.
Time into it, but the conclusion was, is that it just wasn't really ready because we couldn't agree on um, what the, what the criteria would be. It doesn't have to necessarily, doesn't mean you have to hire an engineer to do it. Because the criteria are out there. There are other places that have done that, so we don't have to reinvent the wheel. Um, it's just a question genuinely of time, of getting that data and getting that information, then coming to you with a proposal that people can agree with. I don't think there was any disagreement that there's not a problem. I think everyone agrees that there is a problem and that could be a solution. We just haven't really presented it yet.
And fortunately or unfortunately, the only thing that we are capable of approving tonight is what is presented right here, because that was the only thing that was advertised.
Yeah.
Okay.
You could, I believe, separate those into two.
Okay.
You could like do the first part, if you will, the
Or approval of two.
And then keep the access separate.
Okay.
That was in it. I think that was what was attempted in our planning commission meeting.
And you, and you could, based on what you said, you could limit it to Route sixty, seven eleven and five twenty-two north of sixty if you wanted to. You, you could, because that's, that makes it less restrictive. So, because it's not more restrictive, the ad would cover it. I'm not suggesting you should or shouldn't do that. I'm just saying, you've asked about it.
Yeah, the seven eleven, five twenty-two, sixty and, and I would add Route thirteen to that. Um, because those are the, 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 what I would call the major arterial roads. The sixty-eight, one, sixty-eight dash one eleven, private roads, part of this is as simple as if there's a two lot private road coming in from an applicant that will now need to be, if this gets approved, now need to be approved by the board of supervisors.
Correct, which, which was the case before two thousand and two, or before twenty twenty-two, it was that case for years before. So we changed it in twenty twenty-two, but before that, this would return us to that, all private roads two or more have to be aboard approved, yes.
Okay, um, so can we break this into two?
Sure.
Then what I'll do is, I'll make a motion that the sixty-eight dash one eleven is the two lot private road ordinance should go back to what we had in twenty twenty-two, which it would, an application would need to be approved by the board of supervisors for a two lot private road.
Just adopt the language as presented, yes.
Okay. Should I have a second to that?
I'll second that.
Any comments, questions on that? Roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McCollum?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Ah. That part of this is done and there's no misunderstandings. Any of that comes back before the board.
Correct.
Now, let's go a little over to sixty-eight dash one seventy-five, which is where we're sort of.
Mr. Chairman, can I make one comment?
Oh, absolutely. Absolutely.
Having the two lot come back to us, you understand that that's not going to address the, the issue, you know, about the road stripping. It's not going to do anything because they can still bow right. If you got a hundred acres and you've got the necessary road frontage of two hundred and fifteen feet, you can go and do your ten acre cuts along that rut, ten acre cuts along that public road to the extent that you have the frontage necessary. So just want to make clear that what we're doing tonight doesn't address that issue.
Yep. No, I, it, it doesn't, um, unless somebody comes up with a motion here in the next five or ten minutes or however long.
I just, I just put that out there, so.
There's an understanding of it. Yeah. No, and, you know, it, it's, it's kind of to the, the, the public's comment, you know, um, many of you that know me know I have this saying, the wheels of justice turn slow, the wheels of government turn slower. And that's an unfortunate thing. Uh, we should be able to act and move. And sometimes in order to act and move, uh, you, you do have to have good information and, and a lot of it, and you want to move in a methodical way that you make a good decision, not an irrational or just a knee-jerk decision. If we went to the seven eleven, five twenty-two, sixty, thirteen and, and changed that to, to a different footage? Or is that what you're thinking?
Change it to a footage or have somehow some more oversight, something that we could do. What could we do tonight?
Well, I mean, if you wanted to just add the language that said all parcels along US Route sixty, seven eleven and five twenty-two having single tax items, so you just add the caveat, you got to have a single entrance to come to the board. If we're going to rewrite the whole thing, we need to re-advertise and run it back through the planning commission, which we can do.
So it, that would be, if you have a single access, you have, if you live on one of those major, four major thoroughfares, if you want to add more parcels, you have to come back before the board of supervisors.
If, if you want more than one.
One access. Yeah. If you want more than one access, you'd have to come before the board.
Right. So you, you could add that language if you wanted to. Otherwise, what we need to do is work on the language and start back over to planning.
And that's where, uh, uh, I'm sorry, you.
What about a family division?
Those have special standards.
So that's a special exception.
Family divisions have their own special standards.
Okay.
I, I'm, I'm going to suggest that we toss this back to the planning commission. I, I, I'll do that. As much as I want to do something tonight and, and, and get it done, I think that the, the right thing to do is let it go back to the planning commission and, uh, they, they have a meeting December, whatever, the eighth or something like that, um, fifth, thank you. So they have a meeting December fifth. Um, will it have to be advertised?
Yeah, I mean, they won't have time to do anything.
It'll end up going into January.
Going to January, yeah.
Okay. And I'm okay with that, me personally. I ain't, I don't speak for anyone else up here, but I, I'm okay with that. I'd rather do it, you know, the right way, but I would emphasize being, there's so many of the supervisor-elect sitting in the audience. Take care of the business, get it done. Um, don't, don't, as we've done on some things, procrastinate from August or September when we started this and we didn't get it done. You know, there's nobody to look at and blame that on but us. Are you guys, do you guys, are you guys okay with that? I mean.
Mr. Chairman, I'm, I'm going to agree with you. This is not something we're going to solve tonight. I, I said that earlier. Uh, I applaud the effort of, of Ms. Carmack in bringing forward suggestions, but what you get into is you start making these changes. You better have the whole county in front of you at one time. And you better understand, if you do this, it may have a systemic relationship to something else that you're trying to do with some of your other ordinances. So my recommendation would be to task staff to work with the new board and the planning commission to comprehensively get out in front of all the identified problems that we've talked about tonight. As it, as it affects access, access management, spacing, et cetera, both for residential and commercial. Brett, I have a question for you. It said, we have six, six hundred foot spacing on seven eleven. Do you know anything about that? Because I don't.
There is the, the Route seven eleven special area overlay that has some additional standards for signage, uh, I, I think.
Is it spacing for residential or for commercial?
That, I don't recall. It's been some time since I looked at that section, but there is a.
I think there's six hundred foot plus there, six hundred and twenty-five, six hundred and twenty-five foot.
For residential and commercial?
I'm not saying commercial on seven eleven.
I mean, well, you got commercial down at the, it used to be the overlay.
Right, right. So it says, um, an existing parcel fronting Route seven eleven may have a single driveway access connection on Route seven eleven. Provided that additional driveway connections on Route seven eleven may be allowed where the parcel has six hundred and fifty-five feet or more of frontage. Uh, or where a traffic impact analysis.
Big difference.
So if I have a parcel that has less than six hundred and twenty-five feet frontage on seven eleven?
Yep.
I can't get a residential access point?
Yeah, I, I don't see an exception there, um.
Because my was under the understan, understanding that, you know, VDOT would always allow for residential access. Wouldn't that your understanding?
Yeah, you can't.
If you own property.
You own property, you have access to it. I mean.
So, so that's why I'm trying to make a distinction with the six hundred and twenty-five, is that for all residential? Because if they, you have a residential piece of property where you want to put on a, put a home on that property, it's a recorded parcel. And you don't have the recs with six hundred and twenty-five feet, are you saying that we can't, they, they wouldn't have a driveway entrance?
I'm, I'm reading the statute. I know Brett's already got this. It's a little bit ambiguous as to what it's saying.
Or, or, or you would have to provide a traffic impact analysis that says it demonstrates.
The case, I, I think, but again, this is what I'm getting into. We're not going to solve this up on stage tonight.
Right. Agreed.
So I'm, I'm supporting your motion.
Okay. You guys okay with that? Move, move it on.
So we, this, we don't need to make a motion on anything else. This just dies.
You can do that by consensus.
Okay.
So we're moving it over to the staff, planning commission, review, come up with a much better language and, and let the new board peacefully decide how to get it done. Um, okay, so we're good. We're going to open up the, uh, final public comment period at this time, uh, anyone from the public?
Sorry, Mr. Chairman, you all, uh, uh, I believe originally voted the recommending to do just the first half, the six eight one eleven. Do you still want to do that or do you want to just the whole?
Yeah.
Yeah, we voted on that. That's.
One eleven passed.
Right. So thank you for bringing that up. Public comment period is, is now open. Need your name and address?
Hello, my name is Carl Schwendeman. I'm at seventeen twenty-seven Teresa Lane. I have a question. Could, could the Powhatan Board of Supervisors add it to one of their agendas to, to apply for the TAP grant? For, to expand the village sidewalks, like example, like make it official, like make it official, like, um, what, like what mechanism would it have to go through to get? Like, um, what, like what mechanism would it have to go through to get added to the, to one of the, to one of the board meeting agendas? So that the, so Powhatan County can officially go after the road funding for one of the projects? Because, um, the side, the, the middle, the, the prop, the ro, the proper from, um, Mr. Potts for extending the village sidewalks to, um, his Fighting Creek Depot, that's actually eligible for matching funds from the TAP grant program. But the problem is Powhatan has to use it before Mr. Potts starts building the sidewalk or it expires.
Thank you.
Jamie Timberlake, fourteen fifty Schroeder Road. Two comments, um, I didn't speak during the AFD, uh, public comment period because I, I think some of the comments that were made later just needed to be clarified. I was, I was good with it until we got up to that point. But we went through some scenarios that were not possible under county and state code when we went through some of the AFD scenarios. So I just wanted to clarify those. For, for example, you can't have a parcel in land use that's only five acres where the house is on it and four acres in land use. That's not a, it's not technically possible. So I just don't want any of that floating around. That four hundred and fifty dollars is the correct amount, um, just to confirm that. And then the other thing I think we missed on the AFD permit, um, being presented or maybe staff missed was pointing out that all of these that were done tonight were in the, um, now I messed the title up, the, um, prime conservation or, or, uh, conservation areas in our comp plan. So I think that's very important for me personally as one member on the AFD committee. Acreages don't necessarily matter to me. The things that need to be protected in those areas don't take up much space. So for me, you know, when we talk about acreages and how they compare to land use, that doesn't really bother me when we're talking about AFDs. If they're in prime conservation areas that have been designated that way in our comp plan through the work of all the comp plans, then those are the areas we need to protect. When they get outside of that is when I'll start worrying about acreages and some of those other inputs. But if they're in that priority, priority conservation easement, that's the title of them, um, or priority conservation areas. Acres really shouldn't matter. So just, you know, as you go forward with future boards and hopefully the AFD committee will remember to make that part of the presentation to you in the, in the future that they are part of, of those were specifically a part of that, uh, conservation area. So thank you for your time.
Thank you.
David Anderson, twenty-three sixty-six, Belchris Circle, Powhatan. I'd just like to thank the board, um, at their last meeting for allowing the Jewish community to come and, and speak to the board. I know it was a little bit of an unusual topic and I think you were very flexible. You kind of tweaked the agenda to allow it to happen. You let folks talk, uh, longer than three minutes at times. It may not have all been exactly pertinent county business, but it's glad to see that, uh, you let compassion over rule procedure. And that's a very Powhatan thing to do. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Anyone online?
Yes, sir.
We'll close the public comment period. That'll bring us to, uh, our closed session.
All right, Mr. Chairman. Whereas the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County desires to discuss the following matter in closed session, discussion, consideration, or interviews of respective candidates for employment, assignment, appointment, promotion, performance, demotion, salaries, disciplining, or resignation of specific public officers concerning planning. And whereas pursuant to section two point two thirty-seven eleven A one of the Code of Virginia, such discussions may occur in closed meeting. Now therefore be resolved that the Board of Supervisors of Powhatan County does hereby authorize discussion of the four stated matters in closed meeting, need that as a motion.
So moved.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Oh, it's like, Tommy, you don't even need to ask.
You need to get it down so you can do it like an auctioneer and just rattle it off in two seconds.
Let me know when we're ready.
I can hook you up, you need to go to auctioneer school now, I can get you to that place.
All right, members of the board, to the best of your knowledge, were the only matters discussed in the closed meeting, public business matters lawfully exempted from open meeting requirements, that only such public business matters as were identified in the motion by which a closed meeting were convened, were heard, discussed, or considered in the closed meeting, need a roll call.
Mr. Williams?
Aye.
Mr. McHulme?
Aye.
Mrs. Carmack?
Aye.
Mr. Byerly?
Aye. That'll bring us to, um, county attorney comments?
No comments, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. County administrator comments?
Yeah, I just, uh, commend all of us, uh, here that I think we moved through a four hundred and eleven page agenda pretty good.
Agreed, absolutely.
Yep.
Uh, board comments? I, I just want to make one, try to be as brief as I can on the comment that the Commissioner of Revenue came down on with the acreage for land use and for AFDs. If you're in them, your property gets assessed at four hundred and fifty dollars. If you're not, your property and acreage, one acre, could be as around five thousand, could be around six thousand. I don't know exactly the number, but if you look at, I have a house with, say, two and a half acres and one acre is at fifty-five thousand dollars. The other two acres, um, is at five to six thousand dollars. That's not in land use. That's, I'm gonna pay sixty, seventy, sixty-nine cents per one hundred dollars of that as opposed to paying sixty-nine cents on four hundred and fifty dollars per acre. There's a pretty substantial difference there. And that's what I said earlier was the reward that they got was they wouldn't do anything with their property. And there's a lot of land that's going into AFDs and there's a lot of land that's in, in, um, land use. But if you're in either one of those programs, your property is assessed at four hundred and fifty dollars per acre and you pay sixty-nine cents per one hundred dollars. Sixty-nine cents per one hundred dollars for four, at four hundred and fifty dollars per acre assessment. If you're not in one of those, then your land has the potential to be at five or six thousand dollars per acre. And you pay sixty-nine cents per one hundred dollars on that land. Hopefully that clears that up a little bit. I don't want the, as, as Mr. Timberlake said, we don't want the public misunderstanding anything there. We want them to understand what's going on with that and how that works.